Grab a glass of water, grab a seat. We'll get things rolling here tonight. Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody to another round of Community Roundtable, grassroots community development at its best. And we're now getting into the phase of this whole process that's getting pretty exciting. And if you can see my Salvador Dali painting up here in the front, that is really the funnel we talked about the very first day that we put this together. We went through our idea process, discussion process. Now we're getting down to the funnel part of it, where we'll have strategic planning and then implementation. And one of the good things that's happening out of this with the ideas that have come out of this group, and also all been read in the paper, of course, the city is now having open forums with the community out there, which a lot more ideas are beginning to come back and forth. And so one of the biggest things that we were hoping to achieve was clear, concise communications from everybody that's involved in this community, and I think we're getting there, so hats off to the city. Okay, mission statement, what does this slide run? We all know what the mission statement is. We've gone through this before. You guys all pass your homework. Next one. Everyone's included, all those good things. Guides, guidelines, goals. Community Roundtable is a place where people come together to have a robust conversation about and for possibilities. Community Roundtable, of course, is a place where people come together to have a robust conversation with possibility. And you know, the guidelines we have, we think we could, what if we, what if we, let's try. One of the things that you all notice is not there is, oh, we tried that in four. No, that's never worked. Now we want to do it. So always keep these things on the up. The arrows are always positive. Now, as a community roundtable, and you are the core group. Most of you started from day one and are still here. And because of that, we have a kind of a continuity that we've developed in this thing that allows us to discuss the ideas, put them together, and now... So all the issues and needs are what we're now beginning to present to the community so the community can say, this is what we want to do. And then we, as the roundtable, can present ideas, thought processes, help them get their conversations with whoever we need to converse with. But it's never, a never-ending thought process. And we have a lot of things that are going on out there in the community that are to be continued, that we need to talk about, look at, see how we can help and how they're going to benefit the community as well as ourselves. Okay, tonight's agenda. Okay. Today's goals and objectives. The process, which we've talked about, but now we're really going to start getting into the process. Now here's a key part of it is the strategic planning. Now, as I see a look of terror in a lot of faces out there, it's really not that complicated. To do is a strategic plan for Trinidad, Colorado. And the other thing is make determination what the road ahead is. Where do we go from here? How is it going to impact the community? What can we do to help it be the best it can be for the community? And make this town, as we've said before, be everything that it can be. Okay, Luke, what take from here?
We're going to try to keep Howard and my words to a minimum. But you talked, said, you know, we had some goals and objectives, and right now, we're at the stage where we want to stop talking about things and let's start acting. And all these ideas are great, or they're worthless unless we turn them into action. So now we're going to talk tonight a little bit about how we do that. The objectives tonight will be to collect our own thoughts. You know, and we're not going to spend a lot of time on that. We have spent two sessions going through our ideas, discussing, and you know, throwing them out. We've done some project plans. Consolidate those with the cities. And we've asked the mayor and the city council members that are here to come up, and they'll sit down and share the discussions from the retreat and yesterday's discussions. So they've already had feedback on what they're doing. Consolidate those because what we really want to do is start the community. And the word in there, the key word in there is the community strategic plan. It can't be a city plan, it can't be a county plan, it can't be an economic development or chamber or whatever. We've all got to have a plan. And you know, and as I see it, TCF, for example, once we get this community strategic plan, then TCF will be working on its strategic plan because if we are doing something down at this level, we want to be able to trace it up and say, we are doing this because we are seeking to meet the objectives and goals of that community strategic plan. And what that does is bring this, you know, this, we have a glob of ideas. We have a lot of good ideas, a lot of... Now what we have to do is bring them in and focus. And that's what Howard mentioned there as the funnel. We've got to, you know, if you're going to start the process, then we should have a schedule. And we want to create a timeline. Now, one thing about a plan is it's a plan. It's not going to be concrete. It doesn't mean we can't change or whatever because it'll be a continuously changing plan as we go along, as we monitor, how we see, how we're doing, and we will change things as we go. We've done some, we had some project ideas, and those are good. And then that's not time ill-spent, that is time well-spent. And what we will do is tie those in. You know, we go from the strategic plan, then develop the project plans that says, this is how we're going to do things. It's going to take work. And, but I think the group that's here tonight is showing, you know, the fact that you're here has proven that, proof that you're willing to contribute, and we hope to see that continue in the future. Finally, Howard mentioned communications. You know, whatever we do, and the mayor and the city council has started the process for communicating with the community, we need community buy-in. It's not just a group of people to come out, throw an idea, and let it go. We need the entire community to buy in on what we're doing. Look, well, that was right, I'm sorry. We're going to talk, this is the process that I just talked about. We do, go through, develop that strategic plan. Here's our project plans, and we'll feed into that strategic plan. As I said, we're not going to spend a lot of time discussing what we've done because we've done that before. We've got Tony Haas's, his project. We've got the ideas from the health, next to the... Each group has had its ideas. Now, keeping those in mind as we go through, think of how, when you hear what the mayor and the council had to say, how does this fit into what they're saying? So we've even developed some project plan. Yeah? We've even developed some project plans, and some of them are pretty, pretty good. And finally, we talked last time about collaboration opportunities. When we do that strategic plan, some of the things we're going to have to identify is, where's the collaboration necessary? And that's in itself is going to bring the groups together, the community together, together. Just, everybody's going to have an opportunity to contribute. Everybody's going to have an opportunity to win. So with that, I want to turn it over very quickly to the mayor and the council. If you, if we can ask Anthony and Michelle and Bernadette to come up and share with us what we've asked them to spend about 15 minutes or so sharing with us, what the retreat results, what they discussed, and also yesterday's discussions.
Thank you so much for having us here. I thought that it would be important for us to give you some insights into the discussions that have occurred both at our retreat and at the recent occasions where individuals were able to just come up with ideas and share with us what their thoughts and concerns are. Let me start out by saying, thank you. There we go.
Did she start saving?
No, I don't save. Everybody will run out if I start to. At the retreat, a number of topics were addressed. As you know, we were in that retreat for a solid workday. One of the themes, predominant themes that emerged was the need to address the problem of aging and neglected downtown buildings. And not necessarily in any order, it's jobs, jobs, jobs. And that bubbled to the top even before there was discussion about the problem with our aging and neglected downtown buildings. In the course of that dialogue, we also talked about finding efficiencies in the use of city resources, including our personnel resources, so that we do better prioritization of the work, the city work that must be done, and collaboration between and among city departments. Along that same line, because there's a shrinking pool of dollars, we need to emphasize and counsel the county. We're working together to try and find efficiencies where those disappearing tax dollars can be put to better use. And I'm pleased that our city manager, Mr. Tom Aker, and the county's administrator, Ms. Fabbic, have commenced a dialogue with each other to further explore and identify specific places where there can be that efficiency and collaboration between the city and the county. One kind of out-of-the-box idea that we launched was perhaps something that I refer to as urban homesteading or collaborating with some of the downtown buildings that are currently unoccupied. Maybe they have absentee landlords to see if we can attract young entrepreneurs. And the buy-in would be basically an investment by the landlord to allow this young entrepreneur or entrepreneurs to use a building that's not otherwise being used for any beneficial purpose and allow them to invest sweat equity to get up and running with a new enterprise and new business in the downtown area. And of course, it's in an idea stage. Action steps have to be developed. But I believe with the cooperation of the county and the city and dialogue being opened up with some of those absentee landlords and even some landlords that are here, residents of our county, we can explore opportunities where we can attract new dynamic entrepreneurs and maybe if we can't give them a huge tax break, we can at least facilitate or try to get them into a building where they have the opportunity to get their legs under them and to get some traction, as it were, with the enterprise that they're endeavoring to commence in our community. Another idea that came forward along that line, and I believe this would also be helpful not only to new businesses but to existing businesses, is that the city of Trinidad offers balanced billing to residents. And what if we would offer a balanced billing concept to small businesses? And where it has been implemented in other communities, the idea of who is a small business is tied to the number of kilowatts that are used so that if you use up to X number of kilowatts a month, if you have a good credit history with the city, you're going to be given an opportunity to have a... You'll be able to budget for a monthly utility payment that is reexamined in the 12th or 13th of the month. I forget how they do that. But where they will adjust it and then level off what your monthly payment will be for the succeeding year. In addition, there was discussion about, and this is going to be a sticky wicket and it's going to require a lot of work from all of us, involving revamping and improving economic development efforts within the city and within the county. We're also, we also discussed exploring the feasibility of having a compressed natural gas filling station to serve traffic along Interstate 25. And that's important because the governor has made the use of compressed natural gas a priority. And there should be money available to fund a feasibility study, which I understand the city is already collaborating or working in that direction. Also, Mr. Aker took leadership in beginning to explore ideas with businesses located along the I-25 corridor, downtown, and elsewhere in the county, largely the, our industrial park. But those three areas to get input from the business communities as to how we can more effectively use those resources, how they can be supported by the county, by the city, by the residents. So it's rather a tall order that we discussed and is sure there's a lot of work that needs to be done. But you got my promise, and I'm telling you that my interaction with members of city council, there is, what we say in Spanish, ganas. There is that motivation, there is that drive to accomplish these goals and objectives. And with that, I would like to allow my colleagues, Anthony Mateh and Ms. Michelle Miles, who are both very innovative, sharp thinkers, no kidding, he chuckles, but... To talk a little bit about what we learned from our dialogue with the community that occurred yesterday. The days are going by so fast.
She says I'm dynamic. She comes up with a tablet of prepared information. I come up with a blank tablet, and I'll tap down since I'm good doing it. But we'll be quick because CSU is playing San Diego in just about 45 minutes, and we got to get out of there. Damn, damn Lobos. But anyway, that's the way life goes. I've been on city council, it will be about six months very shortly, and it was a very tumultuous time when I got there. And many times I found myself blinking like a frog in a hailstorm, just all that was going on around me. And I thought that contrary to what I am and what you know me to be, it was probably my better role to listen than to speak. I have tried desperately to be a good listener. I think, as I stand before you, what I want to bring to your attention by way of summary is the thing about which I'm most proud, having been there in the six months that I've had to be there and to be in the company and the people that I work with there, is the things that we have accomplished are, first of all, we set, I think, a more positive tone, and it was difficult to do on some occasion. We focused, I think, to a good extent on relationship, relationship with each other. And that was tough on occasion. Relationship with ourselves, among ourselves, with my own self, quite honestly, and then among ourselves, and then relationship with government. I occupy a unique position working at the courthouse as I do in that I have very casual conversations with a lot of people that go through there, including the commissioners. And many times we sit and visit about what-if kinds of things. And I think therein, I have served in my mind to grease and make more fluid those relationships, which I think are very important. Certainly to the taxpayer, the city and county work together. I think that we need to be thinking more regionally in some of the things that we do and wherever possible, and to the benefit of the taxpayers to do that, particularly in the area of economic development. And then more importantly, what we've done is we've opened ourselves, and I have opened myself individually, as I'm sure everyone else has. I know Michelle, at her place of business, is, she has occasions to talk with a lot of people as well. We've opened ourselves to community. And yesterday, it was actually Michelle's idea that we do this, a conversation with council. Where citizens are welcome to come in and visit with us. A lot of ideas came through. There was discussions, obviously, about the big four, you know, the economy, the hospital, education, and the city, the government, the things that we do. And all of those are very valid points. It was interesting to note, I got here a little bit late yesterday. Quite honestly, I didn't expect a lot of people would be here. So on the way over there, I drove through McDonald's, I brought my lunch, and I thought, well, I'm going to sit here at an empty table and have my lunch before we go to our regular meeting. But I was surprised when I got here, it was a room full of people. I couldn't very well eat my McDonald's hamburger, okay? So I had to sit it there and eat it later when it was cold, but nothing more nauseating than that. Do that as it may, I guess if I get back on track, so you won't waste your time. I guess what I'm trying to say is we are making significant strides. I have lived here my whole life. Somebody was talking the other day about the relationship with the hospital and the 140 years that it's been here and such like that. And I said, well, my relationship with the hospital began in 1952 when I was born there. Okay? And I've had many experiences at the hospital, some of them good, some of them not so good. And those are the things that we're trying to resolve. We are trying to take care of those fundamental, basic things, education and hospital. And is it, is it our role to do so? I think so. I recall recently we had a lady visit us at the city council, and I asked her, what do you want us to do? And she said, be your spokesperson. You know, you provide the vehicle through which change can be effected. And I think that city and county government are the basic drivers to all things that we are trying to do because we have some authority. I recall when I was on patrol, I was standing outside a car one time, and I was giving this guy to look for, and he looked at me and he says, you've got a nickel's worth of authority, and you're going to spend it all on me? And so I learned based on that interaction to be judicious with the use of authority. But what I say that we have the authority is that we can enact ordinances and things like that to make economic development a, come to fruition, or to grease those kids, to make it happen. And I think that our role, and to be worthy of the trust that you have bestowed upon us by voting for us, is that we facilitate the good things that are about to happen. And I'm running out of creative and wise things to tell you, so how about I let Michelle, who is probably better prepared and more vocal, to say something?
No, I want to echo everything Mayor Gonzalez, Paco Gonzalez, and Councilman Mateh said. You know, I think you captured the spirit well, and you as well, Bernadette. We're trying to be, you know, I think the old ways of being transparent are gone. Where you expect people to come to your website, where you expect people to come to city council and get up at the podium and speak to you. You've got to push the information out there. And I think that's what conversations with council is all about. It's getting people sitting across the table from each other, just sipping coffee and talking to each other. I mean, we're just all neighbors, and that's what it's all about here. And I think the mood on the council was very definitely bad. I'm very approachable, you can come to me at my store. I post on Facebook regularly. I also, just available all over town. You know, it's hard to go to Safeway these days. I have to plan to go. It's like, if I had to pop in and pop out, don't go there at 3:00 in the afternoon. Because I'll, you know, you can always come to my ear. Anyway, I just want to reinforce some of the things that Bernadette and Anthony said with a couple of specifics. You know, one of the things that we keep hearing over and over again is my utility bills are too damn high. Somebody ran for mayor in New York City on the platform, rents are just too damn high. And you may have seen, he was all over YouTube. That was his whole platform. My platform's utility rates are too damn high. And I think it takes the wind out of existing businesses. I know what it takes to keep 12 cooler doors open. I know what it takes other people to keep, you know, their fish things going. And it's difficult, and it's not going to get better unless we fight it. Now tomorrow morning, Tom Aker and Franklin Chu and I will be going to ARPA, and we put on the agenda a very serious discussion about what to do about those bonds. We've got $170 million of bonds outstanding. And we've got fewer and fewer kilowatt hours to spread them over. It's very serious. The main reason we have fewer kilowatt hours, Raton is leaving the system. Number two, we've had a prison closure in Los Anamos. And when you have the same amount of debt service spread over a fewer amount of kilowatt hours, that becomes a non-virtuous cycle, okay? And I know Tom is very aggressive about promoting energy efficiency. And you know, with the price signals we're receiving from ARPA, you know, which are eight, nine cent power wholesale, I'm sure when those energy, energy service companies come in and look at what we can do, there's going to be some very low-hanging fruit. So we're going to drive Trinidad's power consumption lower, but that's going to cause a problem for ARPA. So we have to address the bonds, and we've got council coming tomorrow, and we're going to talk about, number one, putting some hurt on the bonds, renegotiating the amount of bonds outstanding. A very obvious thing to do is to negotiate away the 2010 series of bond, which are, bonds which ARPA never got approval from Trinidad or any other member community on. That's going to be a hot topic of conversation. And then we're also going to talk to the bondholders. Ultimately, we're going to be developing a strategy tomorrow, I hope, to also talk to them about refinancing the bonds, stretching time and lowering the interest rate. The average coupon on those bonds exceeds 4%. It should be more like 2% to 3%. So anyway, that's something very, very specific that I can, I think can make a big impact on our community. The other thing, revitalizing ED. You know, Stephen, you had no board last year. Now you've got a small, not quite workable board yet. It's not populated. We need to populate that board with some very talented people. And I've had some conversations with people in this audience as well about repopulating that board. I also had a member of the community come to me and talk about a program where we attract people from overseas. And there's a program with the immigration service where if they invest $500,000 in rural community, or $1 million in an urban community, they can get a fast track to getting a green card. And with all these empty buildings and people wanting to come to this country and things heating up in Asia, there's no reason we shouldn't have something in our ED about these, they're called EB5 visas, if you want to look it up on the internet. The other thing, Marilyn Luesler is doing some wonderful work with Creative Industries. And you know, it's not a sure thing. It's, I don't even know if it's 50/50. But we're up for becoming a creative district this year. We are now an emerging creative district. There's a step above us called prospective creative district. We're competing with some very, very larger, more developed communities. But boy, if Marilyn has anything to say about it, we've got a good shot. And there's a summit on April 12th. Please go to the web, search, just Google Colorado Creative Industries. And you know, there's a summit up in Buffalo in April. So I encourage you all to attend. The other thing that came up, Bernadette, you touched on it, is code enforcement. And I think I can speak for all of council, that's a high priority for us. And we're not going to be able to attract new people to town unless we clean up this town. And you know, we've done things in the past. We sent a letter, we sent two letters. But we're going to explore ways to really put some teeth into that. And anyway, thanks for all coming, and appreciate the opportunity.
Any question?
Could you explain this visit by the city manager to various businesses in town?
The ci... Oh. Did we mention? Well, yeah, what I had touched upon was the city manager is going to reach out to businesses, targeting those, for example, that are along the I-25 corridor, those downtown, and to get ideas from them and from businesses out in the county, of course, to see how, because basically, we have to work together. If we don't, we're all in the same boat, we all have to work together. And I believe Mr. Aker is in the process now of looking into having... Tom, I think you said it was going to be like small group meetings or outreach to various businesses?
One, my idea is to have what I call a business summit, to have the businesses come to city hall. And I sit there and maybe some key staff members will listen to their ideas and their concerns, and then we take that back and start formulating ideas. How can we turn those into actions that can help the businesses, help the community?
Yesterday was our first community engagement, conversation with council and such like that. Mr. Rico pointed out tonight, when I first came here and he had occasion, I had occasion to visit, it may be a good idea to have those in the future with a little bit more focus and specificity. And one of them might be one particularly oriented and maybe not appropriate, or maybe at a better time than during the lunch hour, for business owners. business owners, to come and have those free, those free-flowing, fluid, dynamic, you know, and conversations with council. They, they know what their issues are. My wife and I were in business, well, my wife was in business, I was, we were gophers for a very, for a very short while in the 90s, and, and, you know, we understood some of the, the issues involved there, and who better to ask for the solution than the business owners themselves? And that might be one way, but, but I guess what I'm trying to say, I'd never thought of that until I talked to Mr. Rico. And, and the whole point of what we're trying to do is to avail ourselves to those ideas and to do something with them and about them, so that we can all be better for it. As Bernadette says, you know, we are all in this together, we have to learn to work together, or we're all, you know, working unitedly, or, or we're going to sink individually, and we can't do that. And I have too much invested in this community. I recall when I first took my oath of office, the night that I assumed my, my responsibilities, I remember saying, and I choose to do this because it matters. It matters to me, and it should matter to everybody else, and by your presence and continued presence, apparently it does matter to you. We just got to put our efforts and our, our thoughts into action now.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention something. This past Saturday, I decided, well, you know, get out there and talk to some of the business owners, so I just knocked on doors on Main Street on Saturday, and I was a little bit wary, I didn't know if I should be wearing a helmet or not. But no, in fact, the attitude was very neighborly. People were, you know, thanked me for coming and asking, and I just opened my ears, and a lot of good ideas came out of it. Yeah, some things are not really worth talking, they're small fixes that can be done here and there, but one of the ideas that came out of the tattoo shop is he would like to revitalize the skateboard competition. We have this wonderful resource, the Tony Hawk Skateboard Park, and he, he had trouble raising funds for it last year, and he'd like to come back to it, and I think just the fact that, you know, we were out there and encouraging him, and he didn't know where to get the funding, and I said, well, come up before us, and in June, we're going to be doing the next round of agency financings. And so again, I think it's just pushing the story out there, being accessible, I think we're in a, we can all be in a mode where, where we assume the worst, where we don't know, but I think I'd like to change that, and I think we are.
And another point is, what can, what can I do individually? It's frustrating sometimes when I know businesses say, well, government council should be able to help us, and I just, I wonder, what can I do? Stand on the empty big sign, say exit here. You know, but it has to be more than that. And what can an individual do is, I think have personal pride in your own property. You know, paint your fence, wash your windows, mow your weeds, just, just simple things to make us look presentable, okay? So that when a new person comes in, they drive up and down our streets, they look as though the houses are well cared for, these people make an investment in them, and do their best to make them look appropriate, and, and have a personal pride in what you're trying to do.
I know one of the other issues I forgot to mention earlier is cleanliness of the city, and we are going to make a concerted effort to ensure that our streets are clean, are tidy. I see Mr. Pritchard in the audience, and I want everybody to know that the latest issue of the AAA magazine has a full-page spread about his beautiful gallery, wonderful article about Trinidad, and he made a very good point to us. He said, people are going to read this publication and come to Trinidad, and we don't want litter in the streets and trash and garbage thrown into the planters. So, Mr. Aker and various groups, we're going to get together, and we're going to see about being more diligent, picking up after ourselves. And I'd also encourage the businesses, if you have a concern, I can tell you, Mr. Aker is very approachable. Just call his office, make an appointment to come by to see him. You know, all the brains aren't in one head, I may think I know something, I know Anthony definitely knows some stuff, Michelle is very sharp, but still, given our separate abilities, we need your input, we need your ideas because all the brains aren't in one head.
I have two quick questions, and I apologize if the information has been out and I missed it, but I see about a year ago that Trinidad, this has to do with ARPA, that Trinidad was trying to get out of that contract and talking to Red Turner about a whole different company. Is that impossible, is that why we have to work in full track?
It's, I think the lawyers would slap me in the face if I talked too much about the lawsuit, but the lawsuit still is ongoing. The one thing I'll mention to you is, ARPA was in a better position than we were. I don't think we can replicate what Raton did. They raised their hand very, very early and said, I object to the issuance of further bonds, okay? Where we stand, our strongest leg is in the last series of bonds, it's about, oh, 10 to 15% of the total outstanding, where we were not, we might have said yes, had we been asked, you know, I wasn't around, but they didn't bother even asking. So we're trying to decide where between the 2010 series of bonds and the entire enchilada we can, we can go for. We're having a mediation on May 23rd.
Yes, it's either on the end of Trinidad or Peublo, we're not sure.
And we're, I actually spent some time this morning, Tom and Franklin and I, talking with our attorneys, we're the same attorneys who represented Raton, and we're coming up with strategies for that mediation.
Okay, good, I just, and my other question, like Downtown Colorado Inc. was brought here with our emerging creative district money, and they did all of these community surveys, and I keep hearing their reports, because we paid all these experts, that their reports are coming. Any word on can we put pressure on them? I mean, it seems like what they're going to provide for us will give us so much that we're trying to do all over again with these little community meetings, when we paid somebody to do that.
I believe it was Ms. Lusler who shared with me that they anticipate having those either the end of this month or the very first part of March, which is like two days away. So they should be in our hands, I mean, within the next seven, 10 business days, I'm thinking at the most. Tom, do you have any more information on that?
That's kind of the timeframe I've heard. We've sent our comments back from a staff standpoint, so we're, we're anticipating that they should be in our hands any time now.
So that report should be in our hands just any time now?
Because what you're doing is council, and what Roundtable is doing, we're all kind of at the same point, and it sure would be nice to have something we've already paid for.
Yeah, the experts telling us, these are the broad areas you need to address, and perhaps helping us with the priorities, how we should go about addressing.
We need to organize, we need to avoid duplication, and give some direction and structure to what we're trying to get done, and start taking sequential, logical steps toward that goal. You're correct.
Good. I'm an action person here.
Yeah. Mr. Rico?
I just wanted to say this, as a lifelong resident of Los Anamos County, in the past several years, I've not really seen the openness that I have been able to see in the last six, eight months. I want to thank city council for being available to participate in Roundtable, participating in the lab of yesterday, with your retreat, and those are things that I think are really critical, and the rest of the community is going to jump on board with what you guys are doing. So I want to thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions? There you go.
Thank you, man. Thank you, Michelle and Anthony. Anthony indicated that, you know, with that five cents authority that he had over that number of years, next meeting, he's buying everybody McDonald's hamburgers, so. And by the way, Ari, your point is well-taken about using existing, you know, we have that study, but about, I think it was about four or five years ago, the State Office of Economic Development came, and they led a, you know, community ride, remember you were part of that? And that information is still, so, that, that's a resource that we're going to, I mean, we're not going to reinvent the wheel here, because there, there's a lot of stuff that's been done. The problem is, is that we've done this work, and it's sat on the shelf, and now, you know, that's why we started off with, let's stop talking, let's start doing, let's, let's get some action. So, at the last meeting, I mentioned the possibility of a mobile application, I said we'd have a demonstration of the mobile app at this meeting. We're going to have two things, actually, the mobile app, and then Dr. Boland has agreed to share with us some of his experiences with Cheyenne, Wyoming. But first off, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jay Martinez.